Steve, October twenty, whatever it is, twentieth. And I would ask you to do your lead in as you normally do.
Welcome to the board supervisors meeting of Tuesday, October twentieth. Tonight, we have all the member or number of members of the of the pipeline task force are on the video call. Other members of the public calling in are only available to call in on their their cellphone or actually on their telephone with no connection. However, if you want, you can watch the meeting on YouTube. Note that there is a about a fifteen to twenty second delay. Anytime there is an opportunity for public comment on any agenda item, members of the public will be given a chance to make comments. Need to press star six to unmute yourself, clearly state your name and your question or comment for the board. If you would like to email a question over the course of the evening tonight, feel free to do so by emailing info at eastgoshen.org. Again, info@eastgoshen.org. Susan Diamore is checking her email and will read any questions out to the board. If you are live streaming, though, in the background, please make sure that you are on mute. Otherwise, there's a lot of interference on the call. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call the meeting to order now. And I would say to, I ask everybody to be respectful of the pledge allegiance, which I will repeat. For those that want to stand, that's fine. For those that want to stay seated, that is fine also. So we'll take that. And then after following that, there'll be a moment of silence offered by Supervisor Shuey. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. David?
Thank you, Marty. I'd like us all to observe a moment of silence for those who serve in the military, our police, our fire rescue, our emergency services, and our hospital workers who go in harm's way every day to assure our health, safety, and welfare. Thank you.
Okay, folks, we're this meeting is going to be a little bit different. We're going to leave almost everything until the after we do two issues that there's a number of people here in the audience from the pipeline task force and people that want to understand what's going on with respect to that. That'll be the second item. The first item shouldn't take very long. It's a request by them. It's a zoning board application of relative to six thirty-one Strasburg Road for for a variance to build a to build a house. So with that is, I don't know who's handling it for them, but are they here? Okay, Richard.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors. Accompanying me accompanying me should also be Brian Nagel. I think he's trying to call in. He may be in the waiting room. So if someone could admit him, that would be great.
I just admitted him now. Sorry about that. I didn't know who he was.
There he is.
Thank you, Susan.
I'll wait for him to join here.
I think that's him down there with a funny face.
Could you unmute yourself, Nate? Brian?
Yes, here I am with my funny face.
There you go.
How is everybody?
We're doing good. Don't you gotta, we gotta move at a rapid pace tonight because we got a lot of things to cover.
I can be swift, Mr. Shane. If you're ready, are you ready for me to go?
Yes, sir.
We have the zoning variance application before you this evening for Mr. Jordan at sixteen thirty-one East Riallsburg Road. It's one acre property. And all they're proposing to do is to build a home on the property. The board may recall that the board approved the prior demolition years ago of the a small bungalow that was located very close to the road on this property. Now they want to build a house that would fit into the neighborhood. They've they've tailored the size of the house to fit within the neighborhood and the property does have steep slopes, wetland constraints, and a very unique shape, which justifies the variances that are needed even to just build this appropriate home with that introduction. So it's definitely warrants the variances that have been requested under the law. With that introduction, I'm going to let Rick just add some brief detail as to what what the variances are that are being requested. And I'll note in turning it over to Rick that the planning commission recommended that the variance application be supported.
All right. Thanks, Brian. Yeah, as as he mentioned, this is a this is a residential lot. It's currently vacant. It's in the R two zoning. It's one acre and it's it's sort of wider in the front and it narrows in the back. And and there's also some steep slopes and some wetlands, which have some constraints on what can be built there and where. And so the variances that are being requested are to construct a single family dwelling on more than five hundred square feet of twenty-five percent or greater natural slopes by by altering the grades and the natural soil conditions. The other wave, the other variance would be to construct a single family dwelling and related improvements on more than five hundred square feet of contiguous area in in a twenty-five percent or greater slopes, resulting in impervious coverage greater than five percent on a lot that is less than three acres. We are proposing more more than five percent impervious and our lot is less than three acres. And then the third variance, which I think is kind of a catchall, and and this was suggested to us during our engineering review of the grading plan, is to use and improve upon a nonconforming lot. And as Brian mentioned, a couple of weeks ago, we've we got recommendation from the planning commission to approve this variance request. And the size of the home that is being proposed here is about three thousand square feet in footprint. We looked at some of the neighboring properties and some of the footprints on those. We looked at two properties to the east, two properties to the west, and two properties across the street. And we estimated the footprints of all of those five, sorry, six homes. And we we came to an average of right around three thousand square feet. So this this proposed home fits within, you know, the spirit of what what's out there now.
And that number you're giving, that number you're giving Rick includes a garage, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, it includes a garage. And we believe the the sighting for the for the house where it's proposed on the property is the best. It cannot be slid away from the steep slopes because if it did, it there'd be more of an encroachment on the wetland. And we're supposed to maintain a twenty-foot buffer away from the wetland. So all that being, and there's there's also some retaining walls being built around the house in order to minimize the disturbance to the slopes. So therefore, we really think we're demonstrating the minimum amount of relief necessary to build this home. And if if anyone has questions about the plan, I don't see it on the screen. I don't know if we need to look at it or not. I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board.
Does any of the supervisors want to see the plan on the board on the on the screen? Because if they do, I can tell you, I was at the planning commission meeting where I I zoomed at the planning commission meeting. I don't know if I was the only one. The planning commission spent, as Rich said, a considerable amount of time on this and devoted to down into the minutia. And I would say that it is correct to assume that they have been given the blessing by the planning commission. And in our paperwork that we have, we have a recommendation by the staff for the same thing and also a draft motion if we choose to do that. If no one has any any questions for Rich or or anybody else, for that matter, Brian, I would suggest that somebody make a motion that we support or not support or take no position relative to this application.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Rick, can you tell us if this is a steep driveway? I can't tell by the plans here. Is the driveway steep?
The driveway itself is not very steep. I believe it's between two and four percent coming up from the road.
Okay, and is this going to allow for any other, any other additions at any point in the future? Or not?
I suppose that by zoning, they do have a little bit of reserve for impervious area if they wish to add some later.
Like if they wanted to.
Yeah, but to but to do it in the steep slopes, I'm not really sure how that would fall. But but yes, I think there is some some room to grow grow in the future a little bit. Yes.
Now, are the retaining walls, it looks like they're in this diagram I see here. I just have a sketch rendering in front of me right at the moment, but it looks like there might be two retaining retaining walls. Is that correct? And are they around one part of the property or does it go around the whole property and the the back part of the property?
The the walls kind of make a U shape around the side, the back, and then the other side. So it kind of envelopes three sides of the building.
Okay, and are they are these walls built on the property line or are they set back from the property line? Where will they be?
They're set back from the property line. There's one that's fairly close, relatively close to a neighboring property. And we've been tasked with making sure that construction wise, constructability wise, they can be built without any disturbance to the neighbor's property.
Okay, and this is not going to interrupt the flow. I mean, it's it's going to change the flow of water, storm water. Is there any stormwater management required in this situation or not?
Yes.
There is. We're proposing two underground systems to manage stormwater and the thought is the stormwater situation out here will be better than what is happening currently.
Really happening. Okay. And what what is on the site right now? Is this it's just an empty lot? Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
With the exception of the fact that there's a spring house there.
Okay. Where's the spring house?
It's on the front. If you're facing the property, Michelle, it's on the front left-hand side.
Correct.
Okay, so we don't see it in this rendering of the sketch, the sketch rendering, but
It is shown on the application materials.
All right.
It's pretty small.
Okay.
Relatively speaking.
And is that considered an historical dwelling of some sort?
No, no.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, the board, I think it was a couple of years ago, approved the demolition of the house that was there.
Correct.
It was an historic house at the time.
So there are no requirements that they Rick Smith, there are no requirements that they have to maintain the spring house. It could, if it falls down, it falls down. We don't have to worry about it.
Yeah, they don't have to maintain it. The springs want to exist, but but they don't have, they they could be demolished if they chose to. I don't believe they have any plans to do so.
Okay.
The plan is to keep it and and if if any work wanted to be done at the spring house, it's very close to the wetland. So it's kind of a sensitive spot. I think that the idea is to leave it.
So you said that the grade of the driveway is only about two to four percent. Are we going to have any problem getting a fire truck in there bottoming out? That shouldn't be too much issue, should it?
No, I mean, it's it will meet the requirements for a driveway and we'll make sure that, you know, the grading is such that a that a truck wouldn't bottom out. I don't know that, I mean, I suppose a fire truck could pull into the driveway if necessary. Yes.
I mean, well, God forbid it should be necessary, but the fact is, is that these things happen.
You're 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 less than you're less than seventy-five feet from Strasburg Road to back to the house. So
To the back of the house. Okay.
To the front to the front of the house, but you could you could, they have enough, they could go on Strasburg Road and still get to the house. No problem.
Okay. I don't have any other.
Any comments or questions? Does anybody care to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I will move that the Board of Supervisors support this dimensional variance request to permit encroachment into the steep slope areas of the lot as depicted in the grading and erosion control plan for Robert Jordan dated five twenty-nine twenty twenty for the following reasons. The unique physical circumstances of the parcel shape and topography have created a hardship. The physical circumstances of the lot provide prohibited prohibit the parcel from being developed in accordance with the ordinance. Unique physical shape of a lot was created to accommodate previous historic structure that was not created by the applicant. The dimensional variance relief sought by the applicant will have no adverse effect and essential character of the neighborhood. And the relief sought is the minimal relief needed to construct a single family home in keeping with the surrounding character of the neighborhood.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Is there any comments or questions from the planning commission member or the task force members that are here tonight? If not, Susan, is there anybody in your group out there that has any comments or questions?
If anybody on the phone has a question, please unmute yourself and ask your question. Nobody unmuted themselves, Marty. Go ahead.
I'll call the question then. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anybody opposed?
Aye, opposed.
You want to give a reason, Mike, or not?
Yes, I'll give my personal reason and then give the procedural reason. I think this is, I don't think this is the minimum relief needed. The lot is highly constrained. The minimum relief would be to build a house that's suitable without seeking a relief to disturb the slopes or affect the wetland or the drainage. That's my personal feeling about that kind of land development. I don't think the lot should be developed unless it could be made to scale and avoid that kind of environmental disturbance. On a procedural note, however, my vote is nay. I don't think this is an application to support. My position is no support, neutral. Let the zoning hearing board do their thing. That's my reason.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Anybody else want to make any comments before we go take a vote? Or we did take a vote. Okay, that's fine. Okay, the next subject is the the issue that's going on with respect to what we've learned. And I want to thank the task force, the pipeline task force for enabling us to begin doing the work that we need to do with respect to that. I, as I mentioned earlier, I will turn the meeting over to David Shuey to tell us pretty much what we've done and respond to any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you, Marty. As everyone probably knows, the board was made aware of a whistleblower complaint involving Sunoco Energy Transfer Mariner Pipeline Construction on Route three fifty-two. The pipeline task force has been also made aware of this has become a public matter. The matter involves a dispute regarding geophysical surveys required for horizontal directional drilling conducted along North Chester Road, Route three fifty-two. The board takes this matter very seriously, and I'd like to just talk briefly about what we've done so far. The first thing we did was we retained counsel and our counsel is working with our solicitor. And at our instruction, the council has contacted the Chester County. I've been in touch with the Chester County Council, working cooperatively with with him. We've conducted appropriate, we've contacted the appropriate staff at PennDOT, the Department of Environmental Protection and the PUC to start a dialogue with them. Our council has had discussions with the whistleblowers council and has interviewed the whistleblower personally. We have reviewed all relevant available documents at the time. The staff has gotten permission from the landowner adjacent to the depression to mow and clear the area, which was granted and done. We've marked the area with stakes in the in the depressed area. We're monitoring that depression actively on a daily basis. We've contacted Gene Blum at PennDOT. And Gene is the regional PennDOT representative. He was unaware of the situation and he has pledged to have their hydrologists visit the site and begin to do their own work. We've reviewed our erosion and sediment permit and application and the ordinances that apply to that ENS permit. We've sent out a right to know request to the Department of Environmental Protection and the Public Utility Commission. We've got a thirty-day request from one. We're waiting response from the other. That's where we are right now. And so what what we're trying to do is, first of all, I'll say that the the Penn PennDOT hydrologist next step will come out and inspect the site and we will then reach out to the Chester County's engineer who is experienced at looking at these things because he's been active in three other locations that I'm aware of. We're still in the fact finding mode here. For us to move forward, we need to have facts and information that we can rely on. We we don't want to move forward without having all those facts lined up. After that, all options for a path forward are on the table. So that's where we are right now, and that's just about what we're able to say.
I want to thank David for taking the time to do that. He's been intimately involved in this. I want to thank the other supervisors for the time that they spent since we've became aware of this. David, I will allow you to manage the rest of the process if anybody would like to make any comments. Is anybody from the task force want to make any comments at all?
I do if I can. Carolyn.
Hughes, it's Carolyn Hughes is talking.
Yep, thank you. I just wanted to add that the pipeline task force since the it's since its inception has really taken it to to heart the very issues that deal with the safety of the residents. And some of the specific concerns that we've had and had lengthy discussions regarding have been the ongoing issues with Sunoco and their lack of information. Specifically in the Bowtree area, we have discussed the fact that, you know, the the geologic features of this area you know, have really just been a source of public comment that we've submitted. We submitted as a township that and thankfully, the supervisors took some of our suggestions to heart and submitted that as a township. You know, ongoing issues with government agencies and their lack of response at the PUC, the DEP. You know, our 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 area and our water resources are some of our most critical assets to the township. And having the proper geologic studies before a company comes in and does this kind of construction so close to our our homes, to our community, and most importantly, running such dangerous materials through them as well is something that should be taken very, very seriously. The long terms effect, long-term effects of damaging these assets, you know, a fine's not going to do it. A citation is not going to do it. Sunoco has demonstrated this over the past three years. A change in construction plan after an event has occurred isn't going to fix the damage that has occurred. We've already had multiple accidents in our township at the hands of this operator and specifically at this site. And so I'm really imploring the board to consider with full breath, the options that are there to revoke permits that are were issued by the township to take proper legal action to protect the safety of the residents. You know, we talk about preserving our future in East Goshen, and this is a key part of it, but also protecting what we have right now. So, you know, Sunoco, as discovered through the pipeline task force right to know and discussions, has edited geology reports or geology information that their independent contractor submitted to them. That is actually confirmed by Gene Blum at PennDOT. And we provided the board with a very comprehensive list of some of the exact concerns that we've had with evidence, with pictures, with emails between the DEP and PennDOT and Sunoco that really continue to show that this operator is submitting outdated, incomplete, and insufficient information regarding the geology in this area. And as those of us who have looked at the geology in this area and and the springs around it know, it's very sensitive to both our water resources and to the safety of the properties and the township as a whole.
The information, first of all, we we let me assure you that the board takes this matter very seriously, number one. Number two, as I said, we're in in fact finding and the information supplied by the pipeline task force has been given to counsel and that adds to the the fact finding evidence that that we that we have. And as I said, all all options are on the table moving forward as soon as we're satisfied. And and I failed to mention, by the way, that the whistleblower has also been interviewed by the Department of Environmental Protection and by the Environmental Crimes Unit of the Attorney General. So this is accelerating upward very quickly as well. So I just want everyone to be aware of that as a fact as well.
As far as I could tell, Bill Legaman and Christine Morley are here for the task force. You guys want to say anything?
I have a couple of comments real quick. It seems, David, in the last week, there's been quite a bit of work done through the board, your leadership as well as far as retaining counsel, speaking to solicitor, PennDOT, PUC whistleblower interview, counsel, et cetera. My question, two questions. Number one would be, what is the fact finding timeline that we have established as a board? So this doesn't drag on. What are we really looking for out of this? And if it comes back that it is not acceptable to the board, whatever the fact finding is, what are the next steps? What are we prepared to do? There's been information that's been put out, potentially revoked permits. What would the board be willing to do? What are the options the board could do after you got with your general counsel in order to stop the construction going forward at East Goshen? Because obviously, we've dealt with this failed actor for three years now. The lies, the deceit that they've done to this township, the adjourning townships. We can't have any faith in what they say they're going to do. So again, what's the timeline for us and what are we looking to potentially do? Should word come back that they are indeed complicit in what they've denied that they aren't?
That's two questions. I'll answer the first one first, and that is the timeline. We asked that very same question of our counsel. And we're we're collecting data from a lot of sources. And basically, he said, look, I'm trying to collect data from the DEP, the PUC, from PennDOT, Pipeline Task Force, the whistleblower, the whistleblowers council. And it's a matter of people getting back to him and and being responsive and gathering all the data and then for him to 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 put it all together as a, you know, fact finding mission. My understanding is that in order to do anything that we need to do as far as enforcement is concerned, there's a legal principle called information, facts, and beliefs. And we have to have all the information, facts, and beliefs before we can do anything. So and that's where that's where we are right now. We're in the fact finding. We're we're moving it as aggressively as we can. We're making calls daily to try to light fires under people as far as getting response back. And that's, I'll say again, all options are on the table for a path forward once we we're satisfied with the facts.
If I could present this question to Rick Smith, Rick, what would our options be as a township? You've been around here for forty-plus years. What would the options be if it comes back that they are complicit in falsifying reports? What are the options the board would have to entertain?
The board has, with township has the ability to revoke our permit. But beyond that, I think we would have to defer to Guy. What else we could do? The attorney, what else we could do?
Bill, one of the things the attorney, our counsel suggested tonight was, he does not want to expose any of us to doing something where we're not prepared to do it. So he wants all the facts before he recommends to us a course of action. And I think that's wise to do because certainly none of us want to be exposed to something that we shouldn't be exposed to without the without all the information. But that's
Well, that's that's, let me let me address that from a legal standpoint, Marty. What our attorney said, and Guy is a partner in Lam McElane, so he's a big hitter. What he said was, we focused specifically on the whistleblower complaint. And what he said was, everything in there may very well be legitimate, but it's all allegations at this point. None of it is proven fact. It's, it's, it's got to be put to the test of evidence in a court. So anything the whistleblower says, while it may be true, if we try to go before a judge, I was, I came into this hot, I wanted to say, let's, let's get a restraining order, let's get an injunction, let's go to the PUC. And Guy held us back and he said, until we have facts rather than allegations, oh, we can't go before a judge without really hurting our case going forward.
Yes, you're, you're correct. Thank you, John. I appreciate that. That is correct. There was a comment, a direct this to Carolyn Hughes. We don't know that this is going to happen or not, but I assume that you or somebody on the task force would be willing to talk to our counsel if in fact it comes to that.
Absolutely. And, you know, just for the public's information, we've compiled literally sixty seven pages to submit to the township of two years worth of work from the pipeline task force discussing some of these very issues. So, you know, the whistleblowers claims and, and evidence needs to be collected. But a lot of what the whistleblower is saying is consistent with some of the very concerns in this township that we have been discussing for the larger part of two years. So I just want to underscore that. And, and the evidence and supportive documents that we've provided really make that case as well. So this is not the one person sweeping in, making a claim that is, you know, completely new. What this person is saying is very consistent with some of the exact concerns that the residents have had. So I'm hoping that the fact finding piece of things is swift.
I, I could assure you, our solicitor counsel, if you want to refer him to that, is doing exactly what John Herzog said that. And he will, it's up to him as to whether or not he wants to speak to some member of the task force. However, I leave that to his judgment. I think Mike Lynch was the one that presented, that gave us that idea. So I know you're willing to do that, or somebody else is willing to do it in a task force. If it comes to that, he'll contact you. He's all the contact information.
And Marty, if you could correct me if I'm wrong, but you said your counsel has already spoken to not only the whistleblower's counsel, but the whistleblower himself.
That's correct.
David did.
Him or herself?
David did. David said that.
Yep, that's correct.
I'm, I'm involved in this, but not to the same degree that David's been involved in it. That's the only reason we're doing. David is, David is probably, well, in fact, I may be the least involved of all the supervisors, to tell you the truth. But that's the way it is. But I appreciate, and I know David's liaison with the task force, and certainly that helps everything. We're all aware of the sixty seven page document that we got. I think the number of people have gone through that, or at least some of it. And I'm sure that everybody will go through everything by the time it's all said and done. I think the important thing is to recognize that this is probably priority number one. And we will, we will get to the, God, the unfortunate part is I'm sure everybody realizes Guy Donatelli is, is the solicitor for us. I happened to ask him that question tonight that Bill referred to, and he said, I just wish I could answer that. The question is, we just have to have the facts. And everything that the whistleblower has said so far has panned out to be true, but it's not everything yet. And, and as, as John Herzog mentioned, we certainly don't want to run the first base with, with allegations and get trapped.
And as I said, we're not in this alone. We've got the county involved. We have a couple of other townships involved. We've got the DEP, we've got PennDOT. And we've got the Environmental Crimes Unit of the Attorney General's Office involved in this, so we're not in it alone.
Did you want to say something?
Yes, I did. So all of those entities have been involved for a long time. I've been in correspondence with them. As you'll see in the document, I've been corresponding with them about Bowtree specifically for, for quite some time. I also have had a right to know request in about Bowtree since early this year. And I was scheduled to go in on March ninth, I believe it was, to review the records and to photocopy them, but that meeting was rescheduled due to COVID. And it had not been rescheduled. They were due to reach out to me, but I have reestablished contact with them this week. And the lady that I speak with there has assured me that she's working on getting the records copied for me because their offices are still closed to the public, and so I cannot come in there. I was originally going to bring my copier with me. She remembers me because I was going to bring my copier with me and photocopy all the documents, but she's going to get it put on flash, on a flash drive for me. So if you have just now put in your right to know request, chances are mine may get fulfilled before yours. So I may have information coming sooner. I don't know. So I did just want to say that. And of course, if I get that, I'll be passing that on right away. The second thing I just wanted to say is, I think that the township also needs to prepare itself or start exploring the ideas of if the DEP chooses to do nothing, or if the PUC chooses to do nothing, because that is exactly what they did when they were first presented with the evidence that Sunoco did not do the required geology tests. And they chose, even though they admitted in the letter, which is one of the exhibits in the report, even though the acting regional director wrote that the geology reports should have been done, DEP chose to allow the work to continue anyways. And so this has, we have come to this point because DEP has made the decision to allow it. And so the township has to decide at what point enough is enough for the township. Because this has been blessed from much higher up. And we have to decide what our threshold is here. When have we been abused too much? Because when you continue to look for assistance from the DEP or from the PUC, or you're waiting for cooperation or buy-in from them, you're just going to keep waiting because there, it's not going to come. It's just not. So we have to decide what is too much danger? What can we no longer tolerate? Where, what is the line that has been crossed that we are not going to put our residents into any more danger? And once, I, I mean, for me personally, as a pipeline task force member, I think that that line was crossed with this incident. I think allowing a sinkhole to exist next to a live, active pipeline, those were conditions that the PUC has shut down this line before and stopped the flow. So you can collect your evidence and get the geologists out here and confirm that that sinkhole, that subsidence is actually a subsidence next to an active line. And I think that that is your test. And once you have that, then you need to put in for the shutdown. Everything else is just, you know, the cherry's on top. That is, that's your task right there. Once that's confirmed and it's open and it's next to that hole, I, I think that's what you go with. That's just my opinion because at this point, I can't imagine a condition more dangerous or more egregious other than an actual leak. I mean, we are so far into the red zone right now with this. And, and if, and if we don't take decisive action at this point, I really don't see like what more we can possibly do. I, I just made a list here. I mean, the pipeline task force has asked for a setback ordinance that got shut down, shot, shot down. We've asked for a public nuisance ordinance that got shut, shut down. We've now provided documentation of a serious safety hazard. And if nothing comes of this, I, I really don't know like what more you need us for. I just, I just don't. So.
Thank you, Christine. Susan, does anybody up there want to make any comments? Any of your guests?
This is Judy DeFonzo. I, I would just like for someone to just go through the timeline of when we found out about the whistleblower letter and, you know, knowing that today is the twentieth of October and how long we've had this information and what we've done with it and the time we've had it.
Judy, we found out about it on the Saturday of Columbus Day weekend. And we went right to work. I can tell you that we were all on the phone all weekend. People away on vacations and holidays, talking to us from, from around the world. So that's when we found out about it. Unfortunately, Monday was a holiday and a lot of even the state workers that we were trying to get a hold of were out of the office and, and it delayed us and it was very frustrating for us. So predating that's kind of interesting because the, the letter, the, from the whistleblower's counsel went to a lot of people, not anybody in the township on August twenty second. And for various numbers of reasons, which is kind of water under the bridge and over the dam, we weren't notified until the Saturday of Columbus Day weekend. And it's very frustrating for us to find out that the whistleblower's attorney didn't notify us, the whistleblower didn't notify us, PennDOT didn't notify us, the PUC didn't notify us, the county didn't notify us. It was very frustrating and, and we were alarmed by that. At some time in the future, right now, we're dealing with the situation with the subsidence. And, and maybe later on, we'll look back and find out what went wrong in the communications line and try to, try to repair that. But as soon as we found out about it, we, we got on, on it and we're, we're moving as forward as best we can. We, we got to do this fact finding because if we're going to do something, we don't want to be shooting blanks.
So, so we've had the information for approximately ten days. We've had one of, some of that was been weekend. One of those days has been a holiday and we've not really found out too much in the way of facts. Hopefully in the next ten days, maybe we can get some more concrete information and have that to move forward with quickly.
Well, we're, we're working with counsel. We have a lot of facts. But, but the fact that is that we, we can't share that right now because we're still fact finding. So we're not going to start dribbling out things here and there. We're going to wait until we have everything we need and then we're going to take action.
David, may, may I make a point too? If, if you'll look at that letter, I think people have seen it. All of the agencies that are listed as copies there, none of them have done anything. We're the only, we're the only outfit trying to do anything about this. And the fact is, and I hate to admit this, but when you take the PUC and, and the, the county and all the other agencies, they're all bigger than we are. We're, we're the, we're the smallest guy in this fight, I think.
And we're out there lighting fires as best we can, so.
I was going to say, I, I, I really, Judy, you know, I, I appreciate your frustration and the frustration that everybody on the task force is experiencing because we're also very frustrated. And when you take out five days, I mean, there, there were two weekends and Columbus Day, there were five days right there that we couldn't do anything. And people are on vacation sometimes and unfortunately, it's, it's hard to go through the bureaucratic red tape that we have to go through for some of this information. But the fact is, is that our counsel did get a lot done in a very short period of time. So like David said, we can't share that information publicly in drips and drabs. It's information that has to be collated and the correct information has to be presented so that we can know the direction that we've got to move.
Yeah, let me, let me say this. We have spent a lot of time on this tonight. I, I think we've exhausted this. We have other things that we need to get done. I certainly don't want to prevent somebody from saying something, but at the meantime, we're starting to get somewhat repetitive. And we will definitely, probably through David, keep the task force people up to speed in terms of what we're doing. I would suggest perhaps Carolyn and David would set up their own line of communication. I'm sure that they might have anyway. And, and we'll go from there. So if you don't mind, I would rather move on to other things right now unless somebody has something that they just can't hold back.
I just would like to make one comment. I would like to make one comment if I might. And that is an opportunity is Marty, thank you for bringing it up a few moments ago. An opportunity for either Caroline or in her capacity as the chair for the pipeline task or delegating to another member of the task force, the opportunity to speak directly with our counsel on the matter, one, so they can understand the tenor of what we're trying to share that Guy Donatelli may be able to impart to someone like Caroline, so she understands and can share that with the pipeline task force that we are doing the due diligence that we need to. Prior items that we've looked at, that Christina commented on, we had to do our due diligence there. And the decisions were made through counsel and full vetting of why we could not proceed with certain actions related to the pipeline ordinance and setbacks and, and the matter of nuisance related to it. We have tried to approach those things in a, in a systematic way, in an effective way, in a transparent way, and those were the results. A good example of what we are doing, which is really out front. And there's probably another municipality in the state that's done it or is doing it. And we've already been given a little notice from someone who's paying attention, who happens to be a pipeline operator in the form of the ordinance that we're about to take action on later on this month, which is a pipeline saturation ordinance based on the aspect of the Pennsylvania constitution and the environmental right of every citizen in the Commonwealth to clean air, clean water, clean environment. And we are saying no more in East Ocean. It may not hold water in the long term, but we're putting the, the word out there. So we're trying to be assertive. We're trying to be responsible and we don't want to act in a capricious manner that, that going before a court without the proper facts, whether it's the PUC or whether it's our court of common pleas or a specific action that we're going to fall on our face and lose credibility. And, and that's where we are at the moment is gathering facts. When we have them and our counsel says we've got enough to go, believe me, we are going to go. So I just want to share that. And coming back to the initial comment, if there's an opportunity for Caroline to speak directly with Guy Donatelli, Rick, I think the board agreed that that was something reasonable we could do. That should occur so that you understand Caroline and can pass on to your task force members a little bit more about the process and the, the, that Mr. Donatelli is going through on our behalf. Thanks.
Somebody on YouTube, Marty, somebody on YouTube actually texted a question.
What is it?
Are we in imminent danger?
Are we what?
Are we in imminent danger? And David.
We can't say that we're in imminent danger. We don't know. I mean, that's a question that is, that is filled with, with, with just a, a, a lack of ability to respond. If we say no and we say yes, what, what can we say no and yes to? That's the question to answer, period.
I would answer the question this way. We're doing everything in our power to move as fast as we possibly can. And, and that's, that's the best we can say. We certainly can't say one way or the other because we don't know. So with that, there's one thing I want to close by saying that we've often thought our manager is a very smart guy. And last week he was really smart. He went on vacation. And I want to thank John Olschaw for the amount of time and energy he spent in Rick's absence. And it's nice to have Rick back. It's nice to have John here and so forth. And I want to thank both of you for the job that you, particularly John, for the job you did in getting some of the information that you did for all of us, including David.
Just to, just to amplify this, our counsel was on vacation, Rick was on vacation, our, our code person was on vacation. A lot done in six business days.
Yeah, I couldn't. I want to move on. If, if you don't mind, I want to move on.
All right. And to the pipeline task force members, thank you. And we will keep you informed and we appreciate what you're doing. We may not be able to give you all the answers that you want. And the ultimate results may not be what any of us want, but we appreciate it. You're doing great work. You're supporting us, providing us resources, and we will continue to work together to try and advance this and see if we can accomplish something important, but we still have a process to go. So thanks very much for that.
I, I want to give, Mike, Mike definitely is determined. I want to give, Mike definitely is determined to have the last word and that is the last word. So with that, I would like to ask, thank everybody for coming tonight. If anybody wants to go on a merry way, that's perfectly fine. We will resume the meeting. I will pick up from the agenda from now. And if you, if you don't mind, and the first thing is, as we normally do, we are streaming this on YouTube as you heard. I didn't announce that, but I am now. There will be no public hearings tonight. With respect to the chairman's report, there's a couple of things I want to mention. One is the fact we met in executive session on Tuesday, October 13th to discuss a legal matter. And we also, yesterday, the 19th, October 19th, we met to discuss a personnel matter. And I had a prepared statement, but I think David covered it much better. There are two announcements with respect to precinct seven, which is Bellingham and the people to vote in that precinct. It's possible that they will temporarily move to East Ocean Elementary School. I think David said last, last day that they may be taking a vote on that tomorrow. So, but most likely that will happen. The other one is that our precinct number nine, which is a Goshen Firehouse, has temporarily moved to East High School at 450 Ellis Lane. There's one thing I want to bring to everybody's attention. It's with mixed emotions that I say this. And that is, we are gonna lose one of our very important people on November 6th. And that is John O'Shaugh, who has taken the job as manager down in West Town. John will be sorely missed here. He's a wonderful director of finance and a great asset to Rick as a, as a vice manager. And let me just say, on behalf of everybody, John, I want to thank you for all you've done. You've made us a very professional organization with respect to our finances. And I wish you the best of luck down in our neighbor. And we look forward to seeing you at the joint meetings and we make big, we make big things, big things for you. And you're gonna change the whole dynamics in one week down there when you get there, I am sure. So though John is, John is gonna be leaving us. He will help us to the extent that he possibly can and we wish him the best of luck. And in the meantime, our good friend, Mr. Smith, is leaving us in next June, at the end of next June, and we've got to deal with that situation too. So we will be busy little bees in the personality department over the next few weeks on top of everything else that we talked about tonight. So I just wanted to mention that, John, I said to you that you can have as much time as you want to make comments. If you'd like to make any, be my guest.
Thank you, Marty. I don't have anything to add other than it's been a pleasure to work with all of the folks that are here tonight and all of the 18,200 residents of East Ocean who I love dearly. Fortunately, I'm just going down the street. I'll be around. And I will have the pleasure of spending lots of time with the board in at least talking about the police department, just wearing a slightly different hat than I am now.
Just remember one thing, John, when you get down there, tell the supervisors from down the road that we are always right.
Got you, Marty. I guess.
Marty, it's Bill. I'd like to just make one comment. It's been a pleasure, John and Rick, over the last three years, working with you both. You're both consummate professionals and absolutely irreplaceable, but good luck to you both.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, now good luck to us finding, finding somebody to replace these guys.
Thanks, Bill.
But we will, we will do it. We have to do it.
Yep.
Michelle, you're not pleading for the job, are you?
No.
Emergency service, where I've now figured out why the chief is here. Chief Benatos here tonight, as she always is when we do these reports, which is on the second Tuesday of each month. And I would ask her if she has any comments she wants to make and I'll ask the board to follow up with any comments that they have or questions that they have for the chief.
I'd like to start tonight's presentation with a statistical recap of September. In September, there were 529 calls in East Ocean. That's an 8.5% increase from September of 2019. But when you're looking at the year-to-date and comparing 2019 to 2020, 16% lower overall calls for this year due to COVID-19. The most commonly occurring call that we received in September from East Ocean was ambulance calls with a total of 144 calls. The next most commonly occurring calls were suspicious vehicles, circumstances, automobiles, with 20 calls and 16 well-being checks. With regard to notable incidents that occurred in September, I'd like to highlight a few things. As always, when I come before this board, I talk about scams and frauds. And I need to do that again this month, but I need to put it in perspective for you. In September, there were three incidents, just three I'm gonna focus on, among all the ones that occurred. Three incidents that occurred. An individual called up, pretended to be an employee of the Social Security Administration or a DEA agent, and they scammed three senior citizens in East Ocean for a grand total of $90,467 for just three victims. Because of the way that the money was transferred, we were only able to get roughly $10,000 back. All of these crimes, which were felonies of the third degree, originated overseas. So that is a continuing problem in East Ocean and we've continued our outreach. We've continued many efforts to try to spread the word about these scams. But ultimately, when the senior citizens pick up the telephone, we can't stop them from being the victim. But for those of you who follow us on Facebook, you'll notice that we did a recent post. In October, an individual walked into the PNC Bank on West Chester Pike and said he wanted to take out his entire life savings. The bank manager suspected a scam, delayed the transaction, called the police department, and we were able to get there and find out that it was a scam. This individual would have lost their entire life savings if, I apologize, I'm gonna butcher his name a little bit. Mr. Van Horbeck from the PNC Bank on 51599 West Chester Pike. And that's why we posted him as hero of the week because of the extraordinary action he did to save one of our senior citizens. The other trend that I'd like to point out for this month is we have seen an incredible amount of thefts and vandalism to signs, flags, et cetera, related to the upcoming election. In 36 years, I have never, never seen the amount of activity that we've had this year. And I'd like to remind all residents that one of the most precious constitutional rights that we all have is the right to express a political viewpoint. I ask that you respect other individuals' rights to express their viewpoint. And for those of you who are unaware, that stealing a $5 sign is a misdemeanor of the third degree punishable by up to a year in prison and a fine of $2,500. We have made arrests. We will continue to make arrests as we go forward. And on a side note, I think we're gonna be discussing this a little bit. But with regard to the upcoming election, we have taken a lot of steps. We have liaised with a lot of people. And we are prepared to respond to all calls for service on Election Day. With regard to a couple charity drives, I'd like to throw those out. We are participating in Blue Beards for Charity. There are four local charities this year that will benefit from our officers growing beards. Their police union and also the police officers are donating money towards these charities. And once again, I believe that East Ocean has helped us with our One Warm Coat Drive by putting a box, new gently-used coats, scarves, mittens can be donated in East Ocean's lobby or in our lobby so that people who are struggling this year, and I suspect we will have more because of the coronavirus, we can make sure we take care of our folks. Are there any questions on the board, first of all?
If I have one question, on the scam front, have you met with local businesses? Because one of the scams obviously is send people to get gift cards. And a couple of them have been thwarted when a checkout person has said, you know, why do you need 100 gift cards? Have you, have you reached out to local businesses to enlighten them on maybe notifying if they have an unusual demand for large amounts of gift cards?
Yes, we have reached out to companies like Rite Aid, Target, CVS. Most of the grocery stores, Giant has partnered with us. So we have had a lot of amazing saves from those employees who, who ask questions about why they're making these purchases. So we have prevented some, but.
Chief, have you, along that same line, have you gone into Bellingham and Wellington? And Hershey's Mill actually had any direct, direct face-to-face contact with residents, like in a meeting?
Yes, we've attended health fairs and given out information. We have done numerous, like for the TV, for Hershey's Mill, we've done those. We've kind of been hindered a little bit with the coronavirus. But we're hoping that we can start at least to get the TV up and running again as a way to advertise it.
Okay.
John Herzog is our representative in the police department. John, you have any questions?
I don't right now. Chief, Rick is helping me collect comments and items from the board that we'd like to see reported on. And we'll proudly, hopefully, we can present that to you at the next police commission meeting.
Great, great. Mike, I know you often have questions. Do you have any questions for the chief?
No, I'm gonna reserve.
Can I take Mike's time then? Just because there was, there was some back and forth with the board. And while we have the chief here about traffic at polling stations, is the board interested in any kind of traffic calming or traffic guidance at the polling stations?
We, we had a, we got a little relief, Chief Benato, on six and seven because voting services had announced that seven was gonna be combined at six, which would have been a disaster. That turned out to be a mistake and seven, after Wednesday, they believe seven will be voting at another location, probably the elementary school. So we, we kind of averted some of the traffic issues at six. So that's, that's good news.
Chief, have you, have you addressed some of the things that David was worried about on Election Day? Are we all set for Election Day?
I think I've addressed it primarily like with regard to the traffic. There were plans being worked in place. John was working to have the fire police. We are trying very hard not to have police officers direct traffic. Although most of the polling places are within like the 100 feet that we would technically not be involved in violation of Title 25. We have concern about the optics. We don't want individuals. I mean, obviously, if you wrote it into the statute that police officers can be near polling places, there's concerns. There's past history. So from an optical standpoint, we did not want to do that because we don't want to make people fearful or intimidated to vote. Also because of the cost of having officers do a special detail for traffic. I was quite concerned about that. And lastly, our fire police are trained professionals and we knew that they were good individuals to tap for that detail if we had to go in that direction. I've had some communication with various individuals and various groups. And primarily, what I want to emphasize is Title 25 is primarily an administrative section. Most of our power to take enforcement action comes from Title 18, which is a crimes code. And if you do something that would be against the law to do in a supermarket, it's probably gonna also be against the law to do it in a polling place. Additionally, we're liaisoning with the district attorney's office. She has agreed to put three assistant district attorneys on call so that police departments, should they have any questions or concerns or they need to figure out if there's an appropriate charge they can bring, they can reach out to somebody from the district attorney's office. Because that is the one thing that is clear from Title 25 is that the district attorney has the authority to determine what charges are brought when there is a criminal offense related to polling violations. So David, did you have anything else? Did I?
I don't. No, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
We're good.
Thank Ricky for, after the last meeting, I think it was, it was a question about the distance that at precinct six. And it turns out that we're like 240 feet or something like that. So you certainly are free to prowl some of the grounds without getting yourself in trouble if need be. I think that's where David and I roost every once in a while. So we appreciate the fact that it's got the space down there and it's much bigger than I thought, much further back than I thought it was, to tell you the truth. But I want to thank Ricky for doing that. Does anybody else have any questions for the chief? Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay. You don't need me anymore for the meeting?
I don't think so.
Okay, great. I'm ready, everyone.
Go to bed early tonight.
Yeah.
You'd better watch the World Series, one or the other. Next, the item is I want to turn it over to my good friend, the fire marshal, Carmen Batavio. There is a report from Goshen Fire Company and he will address any matters that have to do with the fire, with the fire report marshal's efforts of this week.
I have a few, Marty. Ricky emailed me Good Fellowship and Malvern. So if you don't mind, I'll do all three of them.
That's fine.
Good evening, everybody. I hope everybody is well and I miss everybody. I'll start with Malvern Fire Company. Remember, these stats are for East Ocean only and all, all the backup information you have for specifics is or will be included in your packets. We'll start with Malvern. Malvern had 23 ambulance calls in East Ocean for the month. Eight basic life support, which is BLS, and 15 advanced life supports. Good Fellowship Club had 53 calls in our township, which runs about 11 to 12% and they were 12.3% of their call volume. Again, the backup stats are, will be in your packets. Goshen Fire Company operations report for September. Fire responses for East Ocean Township, we had 15. Fire police responses for East Ocean, we had four with a lot of man-hours. They were long events. EMS for East Ocean always is high for falls and nursing home calls. 151 calls for the month, which brings us a total of 170. As your fire marshal, I did say that I do respond with the vehicles now. I can do better getting out there with a truck. And if there's an investigation, I'm on scene anyway. I'm probably at 45 to 55% of the fire calls that I make. So are there any questions from the board on anything specific that I talked about or other issues?
Yeah, I just want to know, you have anything to do?
Plenty to do. Almost a full-time job watching Mr. Shane.
Didn't you have an issue with a fire that was, he ended up sending you some information on that had to do with somewhere's up in my neck of the woods?
Yeah, it's, I'm still, I'm still supplying the resident with some information. Are you talking about the burning?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a, I brought it up to you before back in April or May. There's a burn pile on 352. That's a community burn pile. They've been doing it for years. Well, it's getting bigger and bigger as far as what they're burning. Basically, everything they have there is not legal because it's not enclosed. They are burning too large of items, large stumps and large pieces of wood. So I've been working with him to try to quietly get him, to bring him into code without having to do any kind of an enforcement. There have been complaints from some of the neighbors because of the smoke. So I again had a, and again, I'm working with him. I had a call, I guess, two weeks ago, something like that. I still don't have the information to send it to you, but one of the complainants was concerned with the amount of smoke. The problem is our ordinance itself doesn't address a lot of the information. But if you go by the county and the state, then that's our kicker. So some of the stuff that he, he's trying to do possibly maybe on the borderline of what he can do in East Ocean Township. But we have additional codes from the state that it sort of runs home to. That's what I'm trying to explain to him, that it's not only East Ocean, but it's county and the state. And he does, he and his neighbors do not have the right to affect the quality of life to other residents. to other residents. Quality of life is noise, it's danger, it's smoke. It's uh you know, anything along that line. So I am working with him and uh I did uh tell Mark Gordon that if I have a problem, we'll go further, but I I think it can be resolved in a friendly way, I'm hoping.
Yeah, I want to thank you, Carmen. I I would suggest this to the other supervisors. I've been around enough time that I know that from periodically you end up with a smoking issue in your own neighborhood. And if that does happen, I would suggest to refer to Carmen because Carmen is the one that's really should take care of it and and it keeps you from saying the wrong thing. So I have it every once in a while. He depends upon the way the wind is blowing, but nonetheless uh Carmen's there and ready to serve and and does a good job of it.
I will suggest uh you certainly have my cell phone and you are certainly because you're my bosses, you can certainly call me anytime of the day or night. The correct procedure, believe it or not, is to call nine-one-one. Uh the county typically gets a hold of me. They track me when I respond. Here's it when I respond to a fire, it's typically with a fire truck. When I respond to a burning complaint, I go in my own personal vehicle. Many times I don't have police, fire police. It could be nighttime. I don't know a lot of these residents, so when the county dispatches me, they clock me. And if I don't respond in a period of time, just like police, they call me on my radio and say, where are you? Have you cleared the scene? Are you lost? Did you fall asleep? As my bosses, you're certain certainly welcome to call me. I would call the county anyway to report it before I left for the call because they are my they are my backup, just like the police and fire. They they are there to protect the residents and the professionals out on the job. But you certainly call me anytime you want.
Yeah, well, thank you very much, Carmen. We appreciate that work you do for us. It saves us a lot of trouble, I must say. With that, you can now go to bed.
And I certainly will. Thank you and take care, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
This is a momentous. The next issue on the agenda is, I think, probably our our the last time we're going to see John give a monthly report. So he John made it three quarters of the way through the year before he decided to take go to bigger, better things.
Yep, so uh thanks, Marty. Um you the 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 third quarter financial report is pretty positive. We have a positive budget variance right now, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. A lot of that positive budget variance is just a function of timing, particularly on the uh repaving. We didn't really have any paving invoices come through prior to uh October first. Um so a little later start the paving season than normal. Um but also, you know, uh there's some real good news on the um on on the tax side. We're seeing we're going to see a couple of, I think, a couple of commercial sales for the end of the year, so we we may finish um finish the year on the on the real estate transfer tax side close to budget levels. The there really not too much to report on the amongst the other funds. The sewer fund is actually um doing better than I thought it would was when when we set the rates, so it actually may end the year with a surplus, which is good news. Our accounts receivable ticked up a little bit, but still really low. So really what that's saying is, you know, there there may be trouble nationally in the economy, but we're not seeing it locally as far as um you know, the impact on, you know, the number of delinquent um rate payers in the township, so that's good news. And uh the you know, the the bad news that that I can highlight and it's going to stay with us for a while. Obviously, if you have a lot of money in the bank, there are yields on uh township funds is really, really low and where we've historically kept our our money to to actually earn interest is now earning less than the commercial banks are, so I'm moving money over to M and T, just the regular checking accounts with M and T get a better return than CDs and other um illiquid investments with Pliggett. So uh next meeting uh the on the tenth, Mr. Smith will can guy I'll have the budget materials ready. Mr. Smith can walk you through them, but please, you know, in the next couple of um weeks before I leave, um please don't hesitate to reach out to me if you have concerns about any of the budget materials. I I will have some revisions. With the actually uh some good news, the health insurance figures came in. Um and they were much lower than I thought they'd be. I was projecting seven percent and they are one point six three percent. News, so that saves us twenty twenty twenty-five thousand dollars or so. Um so we're, you know, um more to come on the budget.
Thank you, John, for everything. Appreciate it very much.
Yep.
Susan, are you doing all right out there? I'm not used I'm not used to seeing you there. See your friendly smile.
I'm fine. I'm good.
The next item is the minutes and of the last meeting that we had. I read them. I think John did a marvelous job. I guess Ricky, I guess we're gonna have to find somebody else to take minutes from now on. But does anybody else have any comments or questions about about the minutes from the last meeting?
I'm gonna channel my inner Janet and note that on page three, second to the last line, the word should be likely.
Uh damn it, I missed it. Gives me great pleasure in telling Johnny doesn't know how to spell.
No wonder he's leaving.
Yeah. So where was that? Page three?
Page three, second to the last line, instead of like, it should be likely.
Oh, yeah.
Like I said, channeling my inner Janet.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions from the board? David, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve the minutes as amended to uh our meeting of Tuesday, October seventh, two thousand twenty.
Your second?
Second.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there any comments or questions from the board? Susan, does any of your people have any comments?
Uh it doesn't look like it, Marty.
Okay, I'll call a question and all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Five oh, John. Please, I'll be saying that to somebody else one of these days. The next is the financial report. Uh we will often uh have Mike start that. I don't know if he has anything to start this week. Are you feeling starting, Mike? Are you ready to?
Yeah, I'll start, Marty. Thanks. I've got a couple of comments. Um I uh I note on um, you know, I'd really have to go to this on on but in batch one of four on page one. Uh Aqua did afford us through the People's uh Rate Credit case uh for our hydrant, say, one-time credit, which uh on our hydrant rental for the month amounted to about nineteen hundred dollars. So that was kind of some free money, John, you you know? Uh so that was positive. An example also of the recent ordinance we passed associated with the now pursuing collection of uh uh dog and and animal fees through the SPCA and from from uh individuals who lost their dogs or didn't whatever, had to collect them and the township recouping its funds. A good reason for that, uh batch one of page four, uh batch one of four, page two. Our our invoice from Brandywine Valley this month was uh almost uh, well, it was twenty-three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. That's a lot of money and uh for people to have responsibility over their animals uh where we can identify them and recoup some of those dollars, I think was a worthwhile ordinance. I have a question on a number of the uh invoices associated with the whether it's uh uh fetters or uh Foley equipment rental, et cetera. John, do are we while that shows up in the general fund, are we um are we being reimbursed in the liquid fuels funds for that at the end of the year? Is that is that my?
Well, yeah, but I mean, liquid fuels doesn't cover, only covers a small fraction of of our overall.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. We eventually get those dollars back.
But yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
I I thought so. I just wanted to hit it and uh I have um let's see, one other one um on the John, on the sewer operating expenditures that we have, this municipal authority get a copy of those so they see what what expenditures we have coming from our side?
No, they they only, well, no, they only are responsible for the capital expenses. Operating so under our lease rental agreement with the municipal authority that the the township is responsible for the operation
Yes.
of the system and the the municipal authority is responsible for the capital assets of the system.
Yeah, and I didn't know whether they they I never heard him mention it during the municipal authority meetings and I didn't know whether they had a curiosity just to see what our operational costs were. One last item and it is a question and it's under uh batch three of four, page eight, I believe, under refuse. And there's an invoice here from Buckley Bryan for thirteen hundred plus dollars on legal services. Um what was that one about?
So that's collections of delinquent.
Ah, gotcha, gotcha.
Well, and so when we get an invoice from Buckley Bryan for collections, we split it up fifty-fifty. So if it's a thousand dollars, it's five hundred dollars gets charged to refuse, five hundred dollars to sewer.
Gotcha. Okay, good. All right, that's that's all all comments I had. Other than that, a lot of invoices and all well-prepared as far as I can see.
I have a question. I'm wildly curious and I'm learning every day. That's three or four, page one. What did we have to do with golf day at Applebrook?
So pursuant to the land development agreement with Applebrook, so when that land was developed twenty years ago, one of the stipulations said that three days a year township residents would be allowed to play on the private course. So um Jason organizes that. There was the event. What Jason, what day was it? Was it last Thursday?
It was actually today.
Today, okay. So and and it's just a pass-through, John. So like we collect the money and you know, if it costs a hundred dollars, if Albrook charges us a hundred dollars per, you know, golfer with caddy or whatever it is, we collect a hundred dollars. It's just a just a pass-through.
I I thought. Yeah, it's interesting. Thank you.
Jason, I just want to ask one question since we're talking about golf. The season's over as far as those opportunities for residents now for the year and it opens up next year.
Yep, they're closed till May.
I'm saying this.
For us, yeah.
I'm gonna say this publicly. I haven't had a chance to play Applebrook. Um and I would like to play it next year, so I'd like you to put me in place in the lottery for the first opportunity next year.
All right, sounds like a plan.
Thank you. That's my public uh self-interest message.
I have a I have a couple of questions.
Comment, Mike, it could be as early as as May. Are you ready?
My birthday month couldn't be any better. Go ahead, Michelle.
I have a couple of questions. Um uh batch one of four, page two. Um number, the vendor number twenty-six seventy-five candlestick. So what's this additional?
It was it it's basically for Susan. So when um when Amanda's not at her desk, um it it'll basically allow Susan to have backup lines so she can put somebody on hold. Um when she's at her desk backing up Amanda. So from time to time, we have a good guy, Sam Genova is his name. He does a good job and I'm very responsive to any changes to our our phone system.
Okay, and then uh same page, uh vendor number thirty-nine seventy-seven. So under Crawford's, we're spending seventy-three hundred fifty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents on appears to be some kind of um.
Yeah, Jason got hit by a deer. So Jason was driving back from um, what were you driving back from, Jason?
I think he left.
Uh well, he he was he was driving on Boot Road in front of Deveraux and and um it hit the Explorer and knocked out a window. And so I think we get back uh we get back seven thousand three hundred fifty fifty-seven dollars minus a five hundred dollar deductible, so.
Well, I wasn't really too bad.
Jason was very lucky.
I was just gonna ask, so are you okay then from your accident, Jason?
Yep, I was perfectly fine. I got lucky. It was a million-dollar shot on the backside of the truck, so.
Oh, man.
But but thanks for asking.
Did you eat the deer?
I offered up to many people and they all turned me down.
All right, so.
Anybody else have any comments?
I'm not I'm not done. I've got more. I've got more. Um under batch one of four, page three, Higgins and Sons light uh the traffic light repair. So who's ultimately responsible? So the pole was hit and the traffic light itself was damaged.
Yeah, there was there was there there is a police report on this. I believe with this one, this happened actually. This happened. Um there was some back and forth between Mark and we go. It wasn't reported like we go reported to Higgins. We didn't realize it that it had happened until we got the invoice, but it's still what got submitted to the insurance. So we'll be made whole for this one, too.
We will, okay. And then uh page four, si- same batch, batch one of four. Um this is a park and rec not mo- uh module for twenty-nine ninety-five.
Sure. And so this is the annual registration for my rec. So like Jason's park and rec registration. This this came out of when we did the park and rec and open space report thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, when Jason first started. One of the recommendations was we have an online registration portal. And so we 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 looked into it. We decided my rec was the best bang for the buck. And because of this expense of like three thousand dollars a year, um we raised the fees on all of on all of the park and rec programs, some amount, I can't remember, three percent or something, in order to cover this cost. So essentially, it's absorbed through our fee structure.
Great. And then I only have two other quick questions. Um batch one of four, page five, vendor number forty ninety-one. The um the Mary Dell Pond Rehab, um is this number going to start to drop off? I mean, it looks like it's starting to slow down.
Oh, this is this is Pico. So this is like because there is now a like electricity line that goes out
Oh, okay.
To operate and Michelle, what it is to operate that um the area.
The area.
So um you know, we're always going to have that fifty dollars, let's say, a month.
Okay, that's good to know.
It's pretty stable.
Okay, and then um the dog waste bags. So batch three or four, page two. Um how many times a year do we have to buy dog waste bags and how many bags does eight hundred dollars buy?
I I don't know the answer, but there's a lot of, well, Jason, you want to?
I I I I don't have any uh quantifiable data on that. Um Mark Miller said that the use of the dog bags has gone up four hundred percent this this calendar year.
I believe that. There's a lot of people walking in the park.
Okay.
We have had the uh same thing in East Bradford Township. Our our amount, we're probably spending for East Bradford Township. We're spending close to three thousand dollars a year on on the waste bag.
Money well spent.
Holy.
The problem that we have in some crap, is that what you wanted to say?
Holy feces.
Don't encourage her.
Leave them on the side of the walkway and it's up to us to take care of it.
Yeah, that's fine.
A little humor, it's a little, it's time for a humor break. What time is it? It's eight twenty-seven. It's time for humor break. Does anybody have jokes?
I've got one, Mike. Is the chief off? We don't have to worry about money. I've got five million dollars coming in from Nigeria as soon as the the prince passes my check.
Connect me with that one, too. I could use some for my retirement.
There you go. I'll I'll introduce you to the prince.
David, before we get too far carried away, you want to make a motion on the Treasury?
Yes, I will make a motion, Mr. Cameron, that we graciously accept the receipts and approve the expenditures as presented in the expenditure register and summarized in the Treasury report.
Okay, anybody else have any further comments? Susan, any of your group?
No, no, Marty.
Aye.
Question, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? No, nobody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Item is, we're now into old business. Uh there's a couple of things under old business we have to clear up. Uh one is the consideration of the business business park task force that I talked about yesterday. It's been recommended by the group that the three representatives from the planning commission, two supervisors and two futureist committee committee members uh be make up the task force. I don't have a problem with that. Uh if that's okay, then I would accept a couple or the board would accept a couple of recommendations as to who might want to be the best people to serve on that. Or who would like to serve on it.
I would like to serve on it.
I would like to serve on it, too, if I can.
I I would prefer to.
I want to serve one of two.
Me, too.
No, I'm only kidding. No, no, you guys have at it.
Problem with that. And remember, we're going to have a couple of committees and we got to spread out the wealth here.
Yeah, well, I I would step down. If David and and John wanted to do that, I would step step away from that.
I have a I have a in the business parks. Uh I'd love to serve on it if it's okay with the with you guys.
I I I I I've just I've just withdrawn my my desire.
From the last meeting, we talked about the fact that we'll do the task force stuff, but in the meantime, we we are going to continue having two supervisors go meet with the business business park people and and other industrial customers or commercial customers. If we're still going to do that, there's got to be another group of two that take over that responsibility, too.
I would love to do that, actually.
You can't be in both. You can't be in both of them.
No, no, I would love to do that, though.
Okay.
I would love to do that. And if Dave, if David and John wanted to serve on this task force, I think that'd be great. And then I could serve in the other capacity.
David, you want to deal with the going going around to the businesses?
I mean.
Better be in the task force.
I wouldn't mind doing both. Maybe I could do that with Michelle because that would give some carry crossover between the task force and the and the meeting with the business, you know, it's got the shared intelligence.
That's interesting.
Interesting. I I have no, I myself have no desire to do either one of them, particularly if it takes care of me. Mike, you you have any desires?
I have many desires. I.
I'm talking about these two 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 committees, Mike.
You can play the guitar like Eric Clapton.
Yeah, that's part of it.
Will you talk about your home life here, please?
Do we want to do off the task force? Do we want to consider any kind of a at large individual citizen or maybe a vested business owner who may be a good resource for the task force? I I'm just throwing.
I had thought about that, too, Mike. I thought about that same thing.
I don't know who it would be.
I think that's a good idea, Mike, but I'd let the task force figure out who they're.
Maybe you want to add a member or two depending on who you identify. If it would be David and John, you guys see how you develop.
Yeah.
Okay. You know, that might be a bad, I might be a good idea because as constituted now, the task force will be six people. And we may need a tiebreaker.
No, three planning commission, two supervisors, two futurists. That's three plus.
Oh, is it two? I thought it was one futures. Okay, if it's two. An odd number anyway.
Yeah.
Wait a minute. Michelle.
We can talk about the business visits later, but let's nail this down.
Yeah.
So, John, you and I.
Okay. And thank you, David. Thanks, John.
It's awesome.
Okay, let's take care of that, baby. Thank you very much, guys.
That was easy.
And David, John, you can use the backup if you need something, you know, if you needed to go to a one of the businesses or a meeting, you know, I'll be pleased to do that as my time permits just to be a supplemental resource to support you guys.
That's nice because if others can't, couldn't make a meeting or something, it'd be nice to have you. That'd be great. Thank you.
Jason, did you stay? Are you here specifically for the multi multi multiple, my dual model?
Easy for you, Marty.
Well, the multimodal transportation grant.
Jason, you want to tell the people what you're up to and where?
Absolutely. So before you have a memo to apply for the Penn dot multimodal transportation grant, it's for segment B of the trail, which has a cost estimate of three point six million dollars. We recently applied for the multimodal through D C E D. And the reason I have different options in the memo today through Penn dot is that they accept a local match via already incurred or allocated expenses. So that's unique to the Penn dot multimodal. And so when you look at the numbers, our our current calls for engineering, local design, environmental clearances gives to twenty one percent of the local match needed to qualify under the normal conditions of the grant. So in talking with John and Mark and Natasha from McMahon, we looked at getting to that thirty percent because we're we're close, we're nine percent away. So in option A of the grant application, if the board authorizes a new expenditure for a hundred and ninety four thousand dollars, that would go towards inspection and contingency. That would get us to thirty percent, which would put us in the normal grant application pool of applicants. Essentially, we would score higher than if we apply for the waiver, which we did on the C F A application. The and and kind of like the 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 nice piece of this is that John and the finance department are reporting or projecting a hundred and eighty two thousand dollar surplus in the bond. So so, you know, the money is kind of already there if you look at it in that in that way. The other option would be, just as we did on the C F A grant, we apply for three million dollars and we request a waiver for the local match. And we go that route. So the due date for the application is November sixth. The and then I guess the other the other note would be, and this is also just for future planning. For the C F A for this grant, we're obviously looking to get substantial money, three million dollars in excess for grants. But there are other programs, if we do have to kick in a match like proposed today, that can offset our incurred matches that you would, you know, approve today or in the future. Roughly another million dollars. So all grants that we've received in the past. So I think we stand in pretty good footing in terms of that. And what kind of questions do you have on this grant application?
I would, Jason, thanks for that. I I I can support the match concept and I I know that that may create some 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 concern or some of the some niggles with other board members, but I can support that. And in concert with the going out for the additional grants for every single one of those opportunities. If we don't, the match I recognize is an important element. It does score one better. We've this is the one we've gone out to before a couple of times without success. We said we were going to continue to try and do it. If the finances are accurate, as as I expect they are, and there is some free board there that would essentially cover some of that match. It makes me feel more comfortable, but even more comfortable with the success we've had with other grants to pursue those other grants that would kind of fill in that that match, should we actually receive the grant. But I I think that that puts us in a better position to put our money where our mouth is on this. That's what they want to see. In particular, that's why you score better, but to be aggressive and assertive in all these other grant opportunities to see if that may fill that up, should we have to have to put our money where our mouth is if we're awarded the big grant. That's my thoughts.
On the the hundred and eighty three thousand seven fifty two of the projected surplus, that that's just a that's just a cushion that we have in there all in with all the other projects that are paid for by the bond fund. That's.
Yeah, I mean, I think the big the big unknown with that, I mean, that's, I mean, and it just so turned out that when the last time I did the bond projection a couple of weeks ago, the number is almost identical to the number that 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 Jason was like was asked about. So that was just a just a dumb coincidence. But the the big unknown that we're still waiting on is the Milltown Dam bid, how that comes back. So if that comes back over budget and and, you know, we have basically like two million dollars between like i- if the bid comes back over two million dollars, then that eats into the amount of of money that we have in the available in the bond fund. So unfortunately, you know, that a hundred and ninety four thousand dollar surplus is a best guess right now with a big variable still to be unveiled and and we'll know we'll have a better handle on what that end of the end of the project surplus would be once we open up bids in Milltown in what, four or five months.
And you know, when we open the bids for Milltown, and should the the best qualified bid exceed our budget, maybe we go back to the drawing board and scale back anything that may be scalable back and and then go out for rebid to see that we hit our budget mark on that one. So that that one I'll be paying close attention to because if it's overbid over our budget, I'm not going to be supportive of it. And I would ask us to go back to the drawing board on that one. I'm getting ahead of the game. But again, I I I am, I'm in, I'm very interested in these numbers and the and the potential, as John knows and Jason, that these numbers and Rick, that these these contracts can get out of out of hand, out of budget, particularly on change orders. That's what we talked about before. But you can catch it at the beginning on the bids. If they don't come into budget, then you just scrap and you say, let's let's just figure out what we can do here and what we can't with the budget money we have. So that's that's the down the road one. But that's some some of my thinking there for my colleagues.
Yeah, I'm I'm with with you, Mike, on on this as long as we apply for those other and we've had success in the past. We apply for every other grant that we can possibly apply for to offset this. It looks like, you know, we're using all but eleven thousand two hundred and eight dollars of the of the surplus and and there could be some you know, some other issues that come up in the future where we might need some cushions. So with the caveat of applying for every one of those other grant applications, I'm good with this as well.
Rick or John, one of the things that we have to be careful of is that most of the people down around the dam know what we what we said it was going to happen. It's going to be difficult after all the time that they've waited for this to happen to do anything less than what we said we were going to do. But that's to be discussed when it happens. But at the same time, section B of the trail, we committed to spend no money to that, right? Is that correct? Is it correct, John? Ricky?
I mean, yeah, the 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 what the board has said in the past is that we will not spend, you know, we will get construction fully funded by grants. So, you know, what what what? Yes.
What I would suggest is whatever mechanism it is to get that to happen, it's in our best interest to do that. Now, I don't know which of the alternatives is best suited to do that. I do believe that we ought to go out and get whatever grant money we get that's available because you guys are very good at writing these things and have very good contacts. But at the same time, I think we have to be sensitive to what we committed to do. And in this particular case, we've committed to to get all the construction money into terms of grants. So whatever, whatever, I would support whatever gets us to do that. And if it's necessary to go out and look for other grants, I think that's an appropriate thing to do, too. There's no reason not to get as much grant money as we can as part of the game. So I I think it's it's really important to to get that construction money where we said it was going to be. And I'd be very careful about taking anything away from the people that in the dam from what we've committed to doing in the first place. So that's that's where I am on it.
So. Unfortunately, the big money is in this multi is in the Penn Doc grant, two point eight million dollars. So the other ones are all small potatoes. So we could defer, or we could apply for option B and we reduce our chances and apply for the other ones. But even if we get all the others, we're still going to be short. So then we're a year out and then again applying next year for the Penn Doc grant. So.
Yeah, but then but then previous board had said that they didn't want to spend any more money on this. And on this section. And I I'm not, I'm I'm not in favor of of any more expenditure at this point, looking at, you know, we've got the dams that we have to be worried about. And how much does it really change our change our chances of getting the grant versus not getting the grant?
Jason, John, you want to comment on that relative to match, no match applications and and how they they might fare based upon your experiences or your insights from knowing some of these agencies?
Yeah, so I mean, it's kind of a a closed room kind of discussion. Somewhat nuanced. When you talk with people from D V R P C or or the county or the folks that are in the room actually looking at the grants, they they don't give you an exact answer. But what they tell you is if you have a strong project and you have the match, you score, you you score really well. And they told us that we scored really well before. But the this this the the right of way and the the final design with issues at the time. If you have a great project, but you don't apply or don't supply the local match, while they haven't told us that that will kick you out a hundred percent, they said you can apply for the waiver and they'll and they'll be reviewed. My 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 gut would say that they have a pile of the waivered applications. They go through all the match grants first and and select all those projects. And then they may have money left over for one or two projects of the of the waivered projects. And so you would and so we'd have to have like the top project in the southeastern Pennsylvania area to be selected as a non matched project. So I so I definitely think it is a pretty big hurdle, but I mean, it's not unheard of.
I would say this, that based on my experience with the planning commission, Chester County Planning Commission and so forth, we need to commit the in order to get the whole three million and to put us in the best position, we need to figure out the best way of getting the match money. Because you've got to get that three hundred thousand, that three thousand, three million dollars or whatever it is. You you got to get that because I I there are people out there that are going to that remember what we've said because we've said it so many times that you're going to have to, you're going to be really fighting a uphill battle if you don't do what you said you were going to do. Because people are going to believe that you hoodwinked them and all kinds of nasty things that they're going to say. So whatever, whatever way it is that you have the best shot of getting the three million dollars is the way that we're going to need to go. Because I I just don't see doing anything less than that. Because I I agree, Jason has pretty much analyzed this thing and he's pre-rating what they do. The the we have gotten a lot of grants compared to other people. So we don't have the luxury of not doing what we said we were going to do. Because they're going to, they're they're, we're kind of like the the guy that's in the, you know, it's in the barrel being looked at because it's because this is a big a lot of money. And they can do a lot of other things with 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 three million dollars worth of grant money. So I would I would caution us to do anything but what it is that enables us to get to three million dollars.
Marty, I think that's a good point. I but I I respect Michelle's comments, too, about additional spending here. Again, I'm looking at being competitive with this to finish the trail if we're if we're going to be able to do it and have a shot at it. And then taking a look. If 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 we we are awarded the grant, you know, I guess we couldn't, we might decide not to accept it. But I if we rewarded it, then we look at our purse. Otherwise, we look at our projects and 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 again, coming back to Milltown, I'm sure there with a two two million dollar project that it is shaving some some certain things off of there if the bids didn't come in competitively is a possibility. But I I would like to see the trail finished in the intent that it was. I recognize there are pundits out there. But I'm, but I don't want to get into my philosophy on it. But that would be the way I would approach it to see that we maybe do our best to secure it. And then then we we try and use our purse effectively beyond that if we're going to have additional spending. And hopefully that that free board that we have at the moment it remains in place and we have that at least as a cushion to play against that match.
Even if we get one of the one of the four other grants, we cover the additional spend.
Well, that's it. That's why I said that being aggressive on that and getting a shot at that, anything that might discount that amount of out of our pocket as a match, that'd be just terrific. And I know it's more work for the staff to do these applications, but they do them very well. And the reward is is, you know, is 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 worth it and but respecting their time and effort to do it.
Just just so the board knows exactly where we're at. So segment A is funded. The ad will be in the paper sometime in November. This will be opened in December. And the it'll be the award will be noticed to proceed will be issued in March. So segment A will be under construction next year. With regard to B, we have funding for the right of way and we are currently in negotiations with the four property owners. And obviously, that's one of the big pieces. And we didn't have a right of way for the grant we just applied for. But as soon as we get that right of way, all of a sudden, and with all the plans, the the project is much more shovel ready.
Absolutely.
So and I think that's the that's what we're trying to get to. So.
Well, I I think we've discussed this and I I think we ought to ought to, unless there are some other new comments or fresh comments, we ought to just just consider what we want to do as a board.
Well, just real quick to to Marty's sensitivity to how the the board stands in terms of construction for the current cost estimate For the current cost estimate, at the the total cost is three point six million for segment B. The actual construction is two point six million. And if we apply with the match, the the entire grant would fund the construction piece of it. So so I mean, I think maybe we could look back and see, you know, the communications of the board at the time. But if we do apply and get awarded the grant with the local match, all of the construction would be funded by the grant.
So it's just the inspection, basically.
Right, right, right. Yeah, the township additional kicking would go towards the inspection and a little bit towards a contingency. So it still would fully fund the construction.
Okay, well, that's that's, I think that that makes me feel comfortable to support going for the grant with the match. But I'm not sure it's going to, going to, uh I don't know how my colleagues are going to feel about it. But I I I'm willing to to make that motion to uh apply for the grant uh with the match. Um and uh however you want to word it, John, uh but that's 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 a motion I would make and see if there's a a second.
I'll second.
Is there any further questions on that? Because I think that's the right way of going personally.
Oh, so we're looking at spending another hundred and ninety-four thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. Is that what you're saying?
I think it was, I think it was that that we implicit in the motion was that that Jason would continue to apply for grants.
To cover that amount?
To to whittle whittle that down. Is that fair?
Yes, yes, that would, that would be the supplemental part of the motion that uh in proceeding with the larger grant application with a match, that the staff, Jason and all, would be pursuing other grants, supplemental grants to offset that cost ideally uh going forward.
I think that's right. And 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 I I I'm so strong about this one that I would, I would compromise the other one and say, okay, we can't do everything we plan to do at 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 the big dam. But we 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 might be able to do it over over time. I mean, you don't have to do necessarily everything right away. Uh if you don't have the funds to do it, you can, you can spread it out some.
Like I said,
David, did you make it a second to that?
Yeah, I second to your motion, their motion. And and I said before, even if we get the smallest of the four other grants, we pretty much cover the well, it's a hundred and fifty, so we're
So you're talking about trying to get these grants at the same time you're trying to get this multi multimodal grant?
Correct.
Well, there there's a little bit of timing involved. So the multimodal application is due November. Uh decisions will be made early March. The other grants listed here, the um the DV DVR PC regional trail grant, that's also a mid-November due date. So I would assume a spring selection. Then there's the Chester County Municipal Grant that will come out later this month, probably a spring selection. Uh and then the other two are the DC and RC two P two. That is due by April and then would selection would be next November. And uh DCD uh trail is is due in July, November. So so there's a little bit of overlap, uh depending on when this grant would be selected and when we would be notified of awards for the other grants. So there there is a little bit of of a timing um issue there.
And there's a gamble too, because we could be, we could be denied all of them.
Oh, absolutely, Michelle. No doubt about it. No doubt about it.
On the hook, we would then be on the hook for the one ninety-four ninety nine sixty.
Well, yeah, if we if we got that grant, we would, we would have to uh figure out again with our purse strings what 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 we're going to do with that. Understanding what John has already shared, uh talking about Milltown Dam uh and how the bids come in there and possible modification if it doesn't work. And then uh o- other resources too, whether uh, you know, whether we uh whether we reach into our, one of our well-funded funds like our operating reserve fund or our 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 general fund uh equity uh in the in the fund, if we if we needed to do that with available funds. But that's um, that's that's a big stretch at this point in time. And uh you know, ultimately, if uh if anybody that is supports the motion today, i- if that would would pass, uh when the grant, say we've got the grant awarded and we got cold feet or something uh substantial happened in the township to alter our economic situation or 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 our financial condition, we don't have to accept the grant. They're not going to force us um to to accept the grant. So you know, there it it is, it's a path, it's a real uncertain path. But ultimately, Michelle, you're right. There there's a, there's a hundred and ninety thousand dollars plus that would have to be matched. And we would have to come up with some way based upon what's already been said today or otherwise, if if some of those things don't don't pan out.
You know, I'm just thinking, you know, we what we're dealing with right now with other issues within the township and if we're going to have to move forward with lawsuits and whatnot, and um that's money that has not been allocated at this point. And um I think that, you know, I have to look at public safety over
Sure.
over something like that at the moment. I'm just, I'm
Respect that.
Makes me a little bit nervous.
Problems is if you if you're you're, the the supervisors are going to face a real problem if you don't get that, if you don't do section B.
All the funny looking trails.
Reason to do anything else if you don't have a whole, the whole thing down to Airport Road.
Well, I agree with that, but I also respect um the the concerns that Michelle has.
I'm not, I'm not saying that they're not important.
I know.
Sometimes you have to roll the dice and hope for the best.
But I I think that uh at this point in time, we're we're, I mean, we might as well just, it it, you know, we ought to vote or not vote on or or table it, whatever you want to do.
I'm 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 for voting. We have a motion on the floor.
It's motion, it's been seconded to pursue the grant with the match uh for the large grant and then to pursue
And can we open it up for public comment real quick? There's two, one, four people online.
Is there any public comments, Susan?
No, Marty. No, nobody. I'm muted.
All those in favor of the motion? Aye.
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 Opposed?
Dang.
No.
Three to two in favor.
All right, next. Let's go.
It's me again.
What do you want?
This 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 is a much easier one. So for uh Hershey's Mill Dam Park renovation occurring next year, uh there's a small grant, Pico Green Region Grant. Uh we were awarded a grant for the butterfly garden in the park a few years ago.
Right.
We can apply for up to ten thousand dollars.
Yep, let's do it.
And I think we should apply for ten thousand. Technically, there's a ten thousand dollar match that would be uh uh approved tonight, but we obviously have already approved the expenses for that project. And what kind of questions do you all have?
Ten thousand, but we've already, the the match is already built into the 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 uh the budget that we have.
Right, right. Yeah, there's no additional
Got it.
I'm for doing it.
Mr. Chair, I move to apply for the Pico Green Region Grant in the amount of ten thousand dollars and approve matching funds for the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Second.
Uh commerce of questions from anybody? Uh Susan, how about your group?
No, Marty, you're good.
Okay, call the question then. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Is that everybody?
Yep. Aye.
The next
I was on a five second pause.
All right, everyone, I'm going to go kiss my kids good night.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. I'll see you all tomorrow.
Tree and street, street tree resolution. Uh we've got some recommendations from the
Marty, the uh Conservancy Board would like us to update the street, uh street tree recommendation list by adding black willow, American hornbeam and red cedar to list the approved trees.
Is there any reason not to do it, Ricky?
No, they they take their trees very seriously and they they think it's stuff that um isn't susceptible to disease, stuff like that. So
Is there a motion on the floor to
Your liaise on there. Do you want to make a motion?
Uh I think I do. I think that I would like to um make a motion to um to the uh uh Mr. Chairman, I move the Conservancy Board recommend the Board of Supervisors adopt the proposed amendments to the tree, a township tree resolution as outlined in draft resolution twenty twenty dash twenty.
Is there a second? Is there any out there?
No, nobody. I'm muted.
Hold a question. All those in favor of the motion? Very good. Thank you.
Can I just stick with that for one minute and make a request?
Yeah.
Uh it has somewhat of a personal nature, but it's more community oriented. Uh you may not know, but in Goshen Downs where I reside, uh the Emerald Asphor has beat up our um our ash trees pretty good and most of them were being removed last year, this year and probably next year. They're almost all going to be gone. I think uh uh Mark has uh probably about thirty of them slated to uh for this year to go. And uh the policy is, you know, in East Goshen is for these street trees, the township will uh trim them, remove them, including the stumps, but it's up to the property owners if they ever want to replace them. And my point, my request is, uh Rick, if you could forward this to the Conservancy Board, I know we have the list here that's been just updated and approved, but if the Conservancy Board might take a look uh at Goshen Downs uh on a, maybe a site inspection and suggest uh two or three trees that they think would be good replacements for these, uh such that I've said to the neighbors through our uh informal association, uh when that time comes, when they're pretty well all all cut down by this time next year probably, uh maybe we can pool our um uh interests as property owners, those who want to replace it and then go out to one source. And if we have two or three trees that the Conservancy Board specifically recommended for our and uh micro environment in Goshen Downs, it would be helpful. So I would request that you ask the Conservancy Board to uh take a special look at Goshen Downs uh on on that count.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, next meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
We've got two things to deal with there. The first is the we 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 made a motion on that. Is there any other comments about that?
On what?
On on the
Motion passed, Marty.
We're good. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor of that motion?
All right, see you guys later.
Wait, we didn't do, we didn't do public comment.
Comment. Public comment. That's right. Good catch.
So you did.
Nope.
No idea.
We're at item number twelve on the agenda. Any other matter?
Good.
Does anything else matter tonight? Does anything else?
Does anybody really know?
I think it's, I think it's time to go home, folks.
John, you've got to live with me until I'm I'm not living any longer.
Guys, Marty, please open up the floor to public comment. So
Public comment.
Yeah. Is there any public comments, Susan?
If you have public comment, please unmute yourself. Star six to unmute yourself. Nobody unmuted themselves, Marty.
Motion stands as we did it.
Thanks.
I think for that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes, there is a motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait a minute. Just before, does either Rick or John have anything else?
Uh I believe they're out there paving fairly quite tonight.
I was going to ask about that. Good, good.
Hey, Rick, uh well, we can adjourn the meeting, but I have a question. I've been reading about swarm intersections. Um you know, swarming as a safety issue and and what swarming is, is basically when you have the busy intersections and you and you allow walking in all directions, catty corner and everything. Um could we look into that for the uh boot road and three fifty-two intersections on, well, not not three fifty-two, but the boot road intersection with the crossings and stuff?
Okay.
Cold swarming and it's kind of an interesting concept, so.
I'll I'll learn something from that, David. I'm not familiar with it.
It might, it might be, it might be faster. I think that that is, that is real possibility, I think, David.
Yeah, just something to research and look into.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything?
Nope.
Michelle, thanks. John, thanks.
Have a good night.
Everybody.
Night, thank you.
Night.
All the best. Thank you, Susan.
See ya. Thank you, Susan.
Bye.